Here we are.
Well, there we are live on TV too. Come on, sir. Please state your name for our stoop secretary here.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Dick Brunel. I am the managing member of Round Top Realty which owns the property at 158 Deering Center Road. Operates AG Paintball, which is obviously the paintball park operation there. In front of you should be an application that we submitted for a conceptual and design review for work that we're currently doing on the property. We presently have a demolition permit to take down the house and the barn which exist on the... I'm sorry, the house and the L which exists on the property now. And we're currently renovating the barn structure. It needed some repairs. We're currently doing that as we speak. The purpose for this review is that as we proceed with this work, our intention is to improve the... Obviously, if you've been by the property, the property is old and the building's in definitely continuous need of repair simply by their age. The barn structure is the one that is currently being used to operate the paintball business. And the house is currently not occupied. The purpose of the work we're doing now, the first phase of this work, is to repair the barn structurally, to just continue to maintain it as a safe and sound structure. And to remove the L which would enable us to access the property from the center driveway. There are three basic access driveways to that property. The center one is the most, is basically the safest with the better views of the road. And our intention is with the L down to utilize that as the main access for the property, blocking off the other two. Our intention is to proceed with that work, do grading accordingly to access the parking areas in the back, improve the visibility of the property from the front, and again, continue with demolishing the house itself as well. And at this phase, our efforts and our resources are planned to be put into the barn and the business that operates AG Paintball. And we have no plans to re-erect the house. And we're here to present that view to you and to get your opinion as to whether that can be done or not. Paul Robito was here as well. He's also a member of Round Top Realty LLC.
How do you spell your name?
We are the only two members of Round Top. We are the two owners of the property. And again, we'd be interested in getting your opinion.
So you want our opinion on tearing the house and the L down and eliminating two driveways, basically?
Well, we have the demolition permit to remove the house. The main situation here is that we don't want to replace the house. We want to leave the property landscaped with the barn, central access through that main driveway that's there now, and not part of the residence.
Why would we care?
Well, there are several factors at play here. Part of this land is in the historic district. It's in the rural ag conservation overlay district. And back multiple years ago, the only thing that I can assume was that it was a commercial use granted in a rural ag zone. And somehow, these guys are of the opinion that they've got to leave the house in order to continue the commercial operation, which I don't think they do.
Well, the only thing that I could think of that would cause that train of thought was if it was granted as an accessory use?
I cannot find anything. I've looked at every file that I have.
You look familiar. You were the one in here awhile ago.
Yeah, last year.
Alex operates Explosive Industries which actually operates the business.
Yeah, he was requesting to change some hours.
Correct, yes, yes.
No, we never pursued it.
Right. Didn't we have a site plan at that meeting?
There is a site plan, but when it was done, it was just a hieroglyphic drawing.
Yeah, it was a book.
Yeah, you know, it showed the house, it showed the barn, it showed the outline of the land, and that was just about it.
What about the application? Did we receive an application?
It doesn't exist.
Is your intention to expand the paintball business there?
No.
No.
Really, the intention is because the house is not being utilized and is in disrepair, it's not a hazard. But we would like the property to look better than it does. And rather than having to put resources in a house that we don't feel is... can be renovated, if we remove it, we put our emphasis on the barn, make it look prettier, more in line with the neighborhood, and just pretty up the property.
I can picture the property, but the L you're talking about, is that attached to the house or the barn?
It connects the house.
Connects, connects them through, yes.
And the area where the house is being removed, will that just be graded over and seeded or something?
Yes, it definitely would be graded and seeded. And again, one of the big, one of the larger aspects of this is because that central driveway on the property that serviced the barn and the house is definitely the best access of the property given the layout of the road. By removing the L on the house, that enables us to use that driveway to service the property and get rid of the two hundred...
The perimeter of the paintball layout won't...
No, sir. No, sir.
It will look a lot better.
It will look better, sir.
And be more attractive to anybody driving by. We want to put up a nice white fence and put up some landscaping, plant a couple of trees.
How long does that go to stay white?
Well, it'll see the plastic white, it'll last a long time.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, no.
Well, we don't shoot planes.
The paintball's way in the back.
That's way in the back, yes.
This is on the street.
Tom, you should be concerned because they're taking down a house, so they're going to reduce their property taxes.
Tom's a selectman.
Well, obviously, I kind of thought that was going to be a question. That's not the intent of this.
That's the effect.
I understand.
A question, if I may. Did you, you say you have a demolition permit. Doesn't that require a thirty or a ninety day waiting period?
We had that last year when we approached this.
So it's all taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What part of this property is within the Mount Dearborn Road Historic District?
I have a zoning map. I would imagine you guys do. It's the back, it's the back, it's triangular, I guess it would be the rear northeast side of the property.
Because it has to be twelve hundred feet from Mount Dearborn Road.
Oh, it is. It's beyond that.
Really?
May I?
Please.
The barn's not really...
May I approach the bench?
Please.
I just, I'm sorry.
This is a table, not a bench.
This is terrible. If you look at this forest road, this is actually unimproved, but it comes across on any of his property. This is our lot. This is one, the Deering Center Road.
Right.
This is our property.
Yeah.
Not sure what that is, but our houses, the house and the barn are right up here. It's a tiny lot up here. And this is where we're acting, we want to act and take the house down. This is the Historic District right back here. This is the line for the Historic District.
Really?
Yes.
I didn't know it extended down that far.
I have several of these, you can keep that.
You're going to leave that building?
Well, that's where we actually operate the business out of, and that's where we're putting all of our resources.
So it's bound for your size, right?
Yes, it is, sir. Yep, it is.
So, question for you, Chip. If part of a property is within a district, is the whole property?
No.
Just the part that's within the district?
Just the part that's within that specific...
So they're not doing anything in the part that's within the district, and therefore, that's not a relevant factor? Okay. What's the rural conservation overlay district?
It increases the size of the land required for...
Not anymore. It's five acres only, just like rural ag.
Yeah, but we didn't take that out. We went round and round with George Valet over this. And you managed to, you took... Because rural conservation used to be four acres.
Right, right.
It was double the size of the lot.
And then we went to five.
We then changed regular zoning to five acres. And George could not comprehend that if he had regular zoning, that he'd have an extra acre in that conservation district. And he fought it tooth and nail, and I don't think we made anything now in the rural conservation district five acres, but we didn't take the term rural conservation out.
What part of this...
The rural conservation does not give the ten percent density bonus for a cluster. That's the difference in the two zones.
Okay.
What part of the property is within the rural conservation district?
The whole.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
So that's four acres?
Five. Five. But he's got more than five acres.
Right, but it's irrelevant at this point because he's not adding, he's not subdividing.
The only issue I see is currently has a pre-existing mixed use.
Well, that's what I thought.
That's the only issue I can see is right now there's technically two uses on the property. If you take down the house and don't build a house in a year, you don't have the use.
But I don't think he cares.
It's an IRA zone, you can always get it back.
But he's effectively...
Have to go to the zoning board.
But he is effectively converting what is a residential property with an exception into an entirely commercial property. And that's a problem.
Well, that was my question, is it two primary uses?
That's why he's here.
It was accessory use.
I assume it's two primary uses now, pre-existing somehow.
And then the other question that comes up is if you're going to expand the parking, is that going to trigger the need for a site plan? Because...
We're not expanding the parking.
Well, if you're going to park where the house was, you are.
No, that's...
Our intention isn't to... The only thing that we are going to change is, again, the center driveway that serves the house and the barn. We're going to extend that to what is now an existing area of park.
Doesn't change anything on the site plan that you've had.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Did it... Was allowable in this district because it was a home business, and now we're moving a home?
Well, kind of my question.
I don't know, and I've been trying to find that out ever since they mentioned that somebody told them that they had to maintain the home in order to keep the business.
Where is the rural conservation overlay district? I'm having trouble finding that. Did we put that somewhere else?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine? Oh, I was at fifty.
And by looking at the site plan that he's got, I would say that they predated zoning, if not possible at that.
How long have you operated the paintball park? Or not you, but how long has that park been operated on that site?
Nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-five, I believe.
Yeah, they predated zoning.
It predated some...
I believe from the present, from the previous owners, is my understanding that they formed sometime around nineteen eighty-five.
That they were actually operating it?
Yes.
And then it went quiet for a while?
No.
No, it continues. It's been continuous.
When did you pick it? When did you buy it?
We purchased the property and moved our operation onto it in two thousand and seven.
And what happened between eighty-five and two thousand and seven?
They operated a paintball field.
The whole time?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, that was, when we looked to purchase this, we had discussions at that time with Naomi. We weren't even going to consider it if there was going to be a requirement that there was going to have to be full reviews and changes and all this. The fact that it had been operating as one, even though we were moving basically our equipment on, we were doing the very same thing that is always done. We were operating that same paintball operation basically in the same format that they were doing, except with our equipment, that's all, not theirs.
It's been a little bit since then, but it was a paintball place then.
Yes.
The zoning is...
So it's pre-existing non-conforming use?
Right.
The only issue would be if you want to put the house back, I think. It's the only issue I can see. If you want to build another residence.
What about Bruce's point that if you take the house away, you're making the use more non-conforming?
Pre-existing non-conforming use, period.
Correct, but it was, it was a house and a non-conforming use. The house was legitimate, the non-conforming...
It wasn't non-conforming when they built it.
There's one A ordinances.
There was no zoning.
Correct, but zoning came along and said A, B, and C.
Yeah, but if it's grandfathered...
Because there's no, that I could find minutes of meetings, site plans, other than...
Well, yeah, because zoning didn't start until, what, eighty-seven?
Chicken scratching that I've got in the files, there's no record of this whatsoever.
But it's not a home-based business because the people haven't, people operating that business haven't lived in the house.
And it's not, and it's pretty clear to me that that wouldn't be a home-based business if it came before us anew. But that's, to me, the question I'm trying to figure out is if they had... Clearly, it was a legitimate use at the time it was put on because there was no zoning, okay? Zoning then comes in and says, in this particular zone, it's a residential zone.
Yep.
And fine, they had a grandfathered commercial use. They're now proposing to take away the residential part of that zone and continue the grandfathered use. So, five years from today, they decide, you know, we really want to get rid of the paintball park and put it in a McDonald's.
Better go for variance for five years for a McDonald's.
Well, clearly, they can continue the paintball park.
Yes.
But would they be...
I think any change of use would require a variance.
That's what we were... A variance? A variance or a site plan review?
Certainly a site plan review, but I think also a variance.
Even if it's another commercial use, which they are...
Well, if there's something allowed in the IRA zone, we wouldn't need a variance, but otherwise it would.
I think if this did not predate zoning, then we'd need a variance even now. But since it predated zoning, then I would see as we have too much say in it.
You would have say if they wanted to put the house back, because they'd have to do a site plan at that time. And more than likely get a variance to go with it.
But that would be a real problem if they tried to put the house back.
Well, that's an excellent question, because our intention is, as the application said, we have no intention to do so now, but at some point we may. The house right now is located fairly close to the road. And if we were to consider anything like that, we wouldn't want to put it in the same place. We probably want to change the location of the property.
Yes.
So I'm assuming we would have to come for permits and all of that, and I guess normal review.
But it may, what we're saying is that this is a situation where, while what you say might be the case if this were... If everything you had done had been put together under zoning since it was grandfathered, it's a different... It may be. We're struggling with this, as you can see.
No, I understand.
It's a different set of rules.
I understand.
And please understand that we're not trying to make this hard for you, but we want to understand ourselves what we're doing so that we can be consistent in our, in our application of the rules so when someone else comes along, they don't get treated any different from the way you're treated.
Sure, I understand. Okay, but I am glad that was brought up because at some point, we may very well come back and ask, you know, come in with a plan to build a house, you know, with all of the documents.
Sure. Ten years from today, you decide to get out of the paintball business because the federal government is so regulated, it's no fun for anyone and nobody's playing anymore.
I understand that.
Right. And so, you've got a piece of property, and what are you going to do with it? So you, I could see, very well see you converting it to farming.
Yeah, that would require us, a lot of the property, to come in and see you fellas and say, here's what we want to do.
But we're trying to figure out whether or not, this is so unusual, that that would require a variance or whether it just requires a site plan review to change the use from commercial back to residential.
So, so, and since it is, it's, is it, it's rural?
It's rural ag.
Rural ag. It's not even residential right now.
Right.
Rural ag with a conservation overlay.
Yeah, gotcha.
And the Mount Dearborn overlay.
But the Mount Dearborn overlay is not relevant in this case because it doesn't cover the property.
No, it's not.
The rural ag is, and the rural ag is a residential zone.
And he's got the amount of acres that the conservation overlay wouldn't impact it either.
Why is that?
More than five acres.
We've got twenty-eight acres here.
So the total question is the use.
I think, I think personally, right now, I think he has a pre-existing non-conforming use of the paintball and also non-conforming because there's two, two primary uses on the property.
And the house is non-conforming because it's in the setbacks zone, it's in the setbacks.
Yes, so he's getting rid of one of the uses.
But, but he's, yeah, but he's...
So he's less non-conforming.
He's less non-conforming because he's taken the setback issue out.
Getting rid of the setback issue and the, and the two uses on one property.
Yeah.
Okay, five years from today, they decide they want to put in a residential development there. They're going to knock the barn down or convert the barn into a clubhouse or whatever.
Yep.
And they've got twenty-eight acres at four acres each or five, five acres.
Five.
They put in five houses, the rest of the land is whatever. Or maybe they go for a cluster and put in a few more houses, and there's some more open space. What process would they have to go through in order to do that?
Get a demolition permit for the building and apply for a subdivision.
But would there be a problem because they're demolishing or eliminating their business?
They could stop working the business tomorrow when there's no problem.
No, I mean, that they could do. The question is if they wanted to develop the land further, does the fact that they've stopped the business in any way have an adverse or a positive impact on their subsequent use of the property?
As long as they, as long as they stop the use, it doesn't have an impact at all. Eliminating a non-conforming use. Another non-conforming use.
Okay, let's assume they want to put in a development to keep the paintball park.
Now they got a problem.
Serious problem, yes. I don't know how we can buffer the houses for the paintball.
Why, why do they have a serious problem?
They know they can't outside and tie the houses.
What?
Hillary's going to take the paintball down.
No, she's going to take the air cartridges and fire the pellets because they could be used in nefarious ways.
Gentlemen, the election is in November.
She's going to go into agriculture, where they probably produce some funky colored vegetables.
Yes.
Yeah.
But, but if they wanted to keep the paintball operation and put in houses, they want to maximize the value of the property and they think that's the way to do it, would they have to get a variance? To go back to residential?
It's a mixed use at the time of the site plan.
Well, if they're doing a subdivision, they're creating a lot with the paintball park on it and creating, for lack of...
At the time of subdivision, you, A, would require a site plan, and B, more than likely require that they get a variance from one or the other regulations that they're...
I don't think so. If you did, if they did a subdivision and kept the barn and the paintball park on one lot, they're making two lots, and they have another lot that's going to be residential.
How many acres would have to be on the barn? Five?
Yes.
Okay, so now they got twenty-three.
Let's keep it simple, say they're making twenty acres with the paintball park and eight acres with the residence.
So they're writing off a lot to build the house.
Yes.
Okay.
Joe wants to move in next door. They can't do a mixed use. They're going to subdivide a lot off and Joe's going to live in the house.
Right.
What's non-conforming about it? They got a pre-existing non-conforming paintball park and they have a conforming lot, a lot beside it wants to do the subdivision.
And the same thing would be true if it were five acres and twenty-three acres?
Yeah. Now they're going to subdivide tomorrow just because you brought it up.
I'm recording this.
Please. If these, if these guys haven't thought about that, they're not the business people who deserve to be operating a profitable paintball park.
Let me remind you, the conceptual discussions are non-binding. You're welcome.
I don't, I don't see where any action is required by this one.
I don't think so.
I mean, you've got your demolition permit, the house is gone.
The only thing that worked was if they expanded where the houses and the parking or something, or...
Yeah, their question really was if they took the house down, which they are entitled to do, if that would impact the commercial aspect of the property. And I did not think that it would, but you guys are the ones that made that decision.
I agree.
I don't think it does.
Move the excavator in tomorrow.
Actually, they came, like, two days ago, they were there. We had to send them away.
Guy shows up, like, you guys ready for the excavator? I was like, I am.
Not quite yet, no.
Was that for... Yeah, it was, yeah.
So that afternoon, when God was putting in a septic gun at the, the...
That's a question, is there, there must be natural facilities within the barn?
There are what? No, we have, we have a portable unit. A fully...
Flushable.
Flushable, lit, air-conditioned, portable unit for them.
So there's a septic system on the property?
There is a septic system that serviced the house that's, that's on the property, yes, sir. But it is, it only serviced the house, not, not the...
The portable unit has a bladder, and we have it pumped out once every, once every other week.
It's like an glorified portable unit?
Not many people have seen those.
It's pretty, it's a really nice...
They're state of the art.
They are. It's an excellent unit. It's fully, it's a full, without a shower, it's a full bathroom.
They wash their hands. You step on a pedal and everything flushes into the bladder and it's clean.
How is the bladder emptied?
It's serviced just like they service, it's pumped up.
It's pumped out?
Every two weeks, yes.
The bladder is not physically removable?
Oh, no.
It's pumped out every couple of weeks.
They've kind of replaced the job site johnnies.
Oh, yeah, this is definitely a high-end job site johnny.
They put those, they put those on fairgrounds and stuff like that.
Yeah, they do, yeah. Actually, they have some, my son is a...
We actually have a men's room and a ladies' room.
They actually have units now that have full showers. My son is an avid biker. He bikes in all of these big fundraisers and stuff. They got full trailers that come in with showers and everything else these days.
Is anyone using these in residential, for residential houses?
These types of portable units?
Yes.
No, DES work, if you have running water, you've got to have a septic system. And fixed trucks are...
Not if you're recording it. I mean, not if you're not putting it into the ground.
If you have running water, you have to have a septic system.
Water in, water out.
Chip will give you a building permit.
Got to have a septic system. And if all it is is gray water, then you can get a DES-approved dry well.
You mean to say you wouldn't give a house a permit using this bladder system?
No.
No.
Really?
No. Where, where's he going to run his, his gray water? From the kitchen sink.
Runs it into the bladder. Everything goes into the bladder. It takes the place of a septic system, requires pumping.
It's a, it's a temporary situation.
Is this bladder underground?
No.
No, it's, it's, it's a unit. It's a trailer, on wheels.
The trailer sets up, it's around, there's a skirt around it.
Got it.
I never climbed under it, but I assume. So you walk up two or three steps and you're on a platform.
Right.
If you think, if you don't get wet, there's a, there's a bladder.
Yes.
If there wasn't, we would know about it.
I think we should continue this for two weeks to have him, of course, as a trailer, come back and report it. I don't think we have anything to say about you tearing the house down, except be aware...
Just please do a nice job on the barn.
We're going to make the...
You know, that's, it's, that is our drive. We, we, we've talked about lots of things with this farm, but we want to keep it. We want to historically preserve it as best we can, continue to maintain it, make it look prettier than it does, along with the property around it. That's the whole idea. And centralizing that driveway, using the central...
The driveway's a big, the driveway's a big...
It's a big issue.
Well, it's...
The lower driveway, it's tough getting out of there. There's one way up top.
The lower driveway's tough and the upper driveway is tough. I drive that road quite a bit.
You try to fly it over the hill.
It's a challenge.
If you're in the middle now, you can see well to the bottom, well to the top, safety.
Site lanes are adequate for...
Are your customers complaining about access?
No.
We are.
We're concerned simply because it's, the central driveway is the better, it's a safer, better...
There's been people hit there before. There was an accident out there last year, wasn't there?
Well, a kid came flying over the hill and slammed his foot.
He actually ran into our neighbor's property. But on the ensuing lawsuits, it was, the issue was raised that, you know, our driveway was not a... It's a permitted driveway or something like that. That started the whole issue for us to look for a better, even though we weren't driven to, we wanted to find a better option.
Yeah, if somebody got killed by a driveway and not a permanent driveway, you'd have had a problem.
And that's the issue, even though, well, actually, in this accident, which was minor, there was, there was lawsuits, we were dragged in. They, the, it was determined that the fault was the person who exited our driveway stopped in the middle of the road. That caused the accident. But because the permit issue simply came up, every, and of course, we're insured, everything else went away, and we were the ones that were brought to court. And of course, they got their settlement from our insurance company.
Well, how long ago was that driveway made, though? There wasn't any permits issued until seventy-one.
Actually, this driveway is central to the property. Whenever this barn and house were up, that driveway's been there.
Forever.
Yeah.
And they called that an unpermitted driveway?
Well, no, I'm sorry. I misspoke. That, the central driveway that we want to use was not the one, we were using the lower one. And that's what they, it was said that that was not permitted.
Well, it's, it was, it was implied that it was not permitted.
Correct.
There was never any confirmation from any government body that it was unpermitted.
They stay road, they require how much of a...
How they do, yeah.
Two hundred feet, yeah, but back when that was...
It's actually, it's four hundred feet.
Well, two hundred, two hundred each way.
Four hundred each way.
Four hundred each way.
We just thought that, we just thought that we want the property to look nice. So we're going to put all our dough into the barn and make it really shine, okay? The house has had, it really has had. If we're eliminating the piece that connects the barn to the house, that's going to be the access. Coming out of that, you're up, you're not down in the bottom anymore. You're up, and you can see up the road, down the road, so exiting, we're not going to have any more, any more problems, unless somebody is totally...
We have a new sign orders, too. Maybe work to your benefits, you might want to look at that.
What's that?
So we have a new sign orders.
We want, we want, we don't want to change the landscape. We want it to look rural. We want it to look like an old, beautiful barn.
Your sign is gorgeous, in the sense that it's about as big as you can get. It looks like some of the signs you used to see on old tobacco barns.
Right.
You know, that kind of a thing?
Yes.
I don't see how the new sign would benefit.
Well, probably got to move it by the new driveway, wouldn't it?
They don't, isn't your sign just on the, on the barn?
Coming up 149.
There used to be a road sign on a hinge, and that passed away several years ago, and we never replaced that one.
No, because your sign is...
It's just on the barn, so if you're coming up from the country store, that's the cemetery, when you come around that lower bend, you see our sign on the big, pretty barn.
And 95% of your traffic probably comes that way.
It's coming from that.
Yes, it does, yes.
People that slam into trees come from the other direction, in the rain.
Okay, we finished?
What's your timeline?
I don't think it's our jurisdiction.
What's your timeline?
It's going to go, it's going to go slow. Our contractor is, is going to take his time with it.
We're hoping to, we'll start some of the structural work for the barn to prepare for dropping the L this fall. And I presume the L will come down in the spring, hopefully the house next year as well.
It's not, yeah.
Is Dean going to do that?
Right now, yes. He's, right.
I think he understands the value of the beams that are in there.
Oh, he does. And he understands our value of beams.
We had talked to, you know, those fellows that buy old buildings? I mean, we're talking 1700s for this house, and the beams are...
Well, at least some portions are.
And they're pegged.
And human pegged.
Right? And we called the company way back a few years ago and asked them, "Is there any value?" And they, they came and looked, and they said, "No." What we're going to get out of this house, it doesn't justify us taking in a pot board, by the way.
That's the house, not the barn. Barn, the barn probably has more value in its structure. But the people that preceded us in this house long ago had tried to modernize it, took SARS to it, took out the nice staircases.
Yeah, they did a lot of...
And pretty much took out anything that was of value to it. So it's, it's put us in this position to unfortunately take it down, so.
You mean all the paneling and...
All that's, it was all gutted.
There's still a few nice, like, cabinet doors and stuff that go, that date back to the period. We're going to obviously try to save some of that back, you know? But as far as the physicals, bones of the place...
Well, I hope you can save the timbers, because you could use those in restoring the barn.
Well, actually, we...
Dean's got that in mind.
There are sections of the barn that we're going to alter, and so anything that we're able to retrieve from that will go into the, supporting the new structures that we're, we're going to do to take care of the section that's going to have to be filled in after we remove the L.
I don't think it's our jurisdiction. I think the board agrees.
I agree. I don't think we need to vote on it, huh?
Nope.
Do we need to submit something formally to get in, or just we're fine, go ahead and operate and stay in touch with Chip? Okay, that's great.
Staying in touch with Chip is very important.
Oh, trust, we, we found that out the easy way and the hard way, so.
You know, everybody in there has been great lessons we got here seven or eight years ago. We just wanted to make sure that we cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, and make sure that everything is the way we all want it to be, not, you know...
The other thing we really like you to do...
Yes?
Is whatever the houses, the value of the house is worth, make sure you put that much into improvements in the barn so your tax rate doesn't go up.
We will absolutely try. You know, actually, the, you know, the relationship between towns and its citizenry is legit. I mean, you know, you got, the town exists on the revenue every season from us.
Right.
We know it's a two-sided street. We understand it, too.
I do have a question. Is there a risk for us later, five, 10 years down the road, that a new planning board is going to go, "Hey, wait a minute"?
No, there's a small risk of that. The larger risk is that the zoning ordinance changes, but that's a risk that everybody always has.
Exactly.
And they're still, they're still not pre-existing non-conforming?
Every year in the town, I won't say every year, but almost every year, there are some changes to the zoning ordinance. Most of them are technical corrections or tweaks. Every so often, there's a policy change.
But either way, they're pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, that's with your current use, but the point is, if you want to put in the subdivision or if you want to do something else...
Hey, Dick, and I don't buy green bananas anyway, you know what I mean?
You're not that old, you're not that old.
Speak for yourself.
He had the cancer, I had the cancer. I had the knee replacement. I had the heart attack. I'm ahead of you guys.
I think once, once, once you go ahead with this operation, you're effectively grandfathered, should another board take a different view. And, because there's going to be some sort of a record of this.
Okay.
I take it Chip, you do something, and I'll be writing something. Then when, when we review these minutes, make sure that, make sure the minutes fully reflect what the board is saying.
You're writing the minutes.
I am.
Why are you telling us?
Because what I write may not be what fully reflects what you guys are saying, so check it.
I only ask that question because things change.
Yes.
And people change. My sister once had a home business in, in, and it was a dentist's, they gave all the approvals. And then the board changed a few years later, caused them hundreds of thousands of dollars to shut it down. And there wasn't anything they could do, and they ended up losing their home because of, because of that.
What state?
Massachusetts. You know, the one that, that was practically all moved up here.
The only thing that could change that could adversely affect you, that I could think of, and it probably doesn't have much to do with this board, is a health regulation change. Paintball splattering is dangerous to the health. If somebody makes that determination, you're out of business.
Sure, of course. We understand that. Now, actually, that, that very thing was, came about in this industry back in the 80s.
MSDS sheets.
And MSDS, and the paintball formula had been changed, at that time, was changed to a biodegradable, and it's been that way ever since.
Oh, I was thinking...
But that said, I understand that. If there was something like that, obviously, we'd have to abide by it.
Let's assume the physical splat...
Right.
In some way is now determined to cause cancer.
Yeah. Exactly. We understand that. We're surrounded by those risks every day, so, all of us, all of us.
Everybody is, yes.
No matter what.
Okay.
What's that?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chip. Thanks very much. Very well, first place. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Pleasure meeting you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much, Chip.
I appreciate your advice. Thank you.
Are you guys, you're only open weekends now, right?
Yes, yes, we do the private games during the weekend, the...
But only on a, on a, on an advertised basis, just, yeah, in private by appointment. And mention that switch down in the bathroom downstairs, so it doesn't...
Before you go, are there a certain number of people who have to participate in order for the game to be fun?
No.
One person?
Well, actually, if one person wants to fire at targets, then so be it.
No, 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 but if you, if you're trying to play a game...
You hunt each other down.
Well, you need to play against each other.
And I say that because I have two grandchildren from Rhode Island that I bring up every once in a while, and they're a bit timid, so, and they don't like to join the groups, so the two of them play with each other. But they have a heck of a time.
But on a Saturday, if there was only two players, it would be no fun for us.
No, I got that. But the point is...
There would be no remodeling, anything.
If five guys come up and another five guys come up, that's more than enough to...
Yeah. We, what we do is we put the novices together so they can play at their own happy level, and the guys that are all, da-da-da-da, those guys have their own game.
Do you have night games?
No. Then there, done there.
It's not here.
That's an accident-looking place to happen.
We had another paintball field in Wyndham, New Hampshire. It was the largest, one of the largest in the country. And we released, brought, we brought 26 or 27 of them. And we, we, we thought, everybody was after us. You got to run night games. So we thought, okay, we'll go to show up. We got those things that light up around you, they're like the below golf balls, you know? So everybody was crashing into trees. They were all exhausted the next morning, right? They were all passed out in the field with, in between parking in a grass field. They're all passed out. And nobody showed up on Saturday because they were, they were playing all night long. So we looked at each other and went, "Wow, this is a waste of, this is a waste of time." Not to mention the safety issue, if guys are running in the woods, the trip factor...
Headline on a tree.
Tree factor, you know?
Alex operates different sized fields, so if five guys came up, five-on-five, even three-on-three, Alex will have an appropriate field size, and they'll go and have a great time. If we have 20-on-20, we have a sized field for that, so. Any others?
Development, they, the property is chopped up into different sites.
Do you guys get departments? You got a, you have a, we have a field for you.
Are you using that triangle in the back?
The, uh...
The part that's in the historic district?
Sure. Yeah, that's part of the open lane, yes, sir.
Does that change anything?
Pre-existing non-conforming, sorry, Neil.
If there are no structures on that, we simply use the property, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
The only thing else on the agenda is subdivision regs. In between the last two months, I think we've kind of beat them up pretty good.
We've gone over, we've gone over a number of them. I had some technical changes. I don't know that we've really had a discussion of the changes that you proposed, because some of yours were substantive, or at least more technical than mine were. And the other thing that we haven't done is to have a discussion with the fire department, the police department, highway department about road sizes.
Getting the road geometry, you ought to get those three people in here if you can.
Will you just let me know when you want them here kicking and screaming?
Two minutes.
Well, we can't do it this month.
Oh, okay.
We have to post it.
No, you don't have to post it.
No, we have to invite them.
You have to invite them.
Right, but it's not a...
I'm not going to call Sean Kelly right now and say, "Come over here, the planning board wants..."
Yeah, call him.
I've got...
I'll put the answer on speakerphone.
You'll invite them for the first meeting in September or October? First or second? Uh, first, yeah.
September 8th?
I, um...
You made a chart.
I made a chart of what the standards are in Deering-Hopkin Towne-Wear, and then what the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission had as a recommendation.
I don't know, Neil has a chart.
I'm sorry?
You put out the minutes, and Neil has a chart, yeah?
Yeah, maybe. And it shows, it, all of these organizations basically have their road width determined by the amount of traffic.
Right.
Okay? And, and it varies. Ours is the greatest of all of the, these three, our neighbors in Southern New Hampshire Planning. But, just to give you an idea, I thought this might be interesting kind of information. So I will email this to everyone.
Okay.
Okay?
Can Tom do one of those, too?
I gave everybody a packet.
Yes.
Took all of the surrounding towns. Anything that's contiguous with, with Wear. Could I get copies of both of those to send to the people that you want to appear here to discuss road widths? So that they know what they're getting into?
I gave a packet.